We'll go ahead and start the council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. We'll start with a prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you have given our community. We ask that you comfort the family and friends of our residents that recently passed away. Watch over and protect our servicemen and women. Give us wisdom to govern and the ability to work together in harmony. That is, in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Would you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Joe.
Here.
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 You have the regular council minutes from March 21st in your council packets. May I have a motion to approve? Or are there any additions or corrections?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Beverly moved to approve. Was that Mr. Hoodley?
Yep.
Second in. Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedman?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jep.
Yes.
Thank you. You also have the approved bills list in your packet. Are there any questions?
I have one about the fire with the internet line with Horizon. Let's come in with what we get.
That's Horizon tablets.
You can't do that with metalink. Metalink don't offer that kind of stuff?
Are these tablets in your trucks or are they? Any more questions?
No.
About that? Anybody else have any questions?
I don't move to pay the bills.
Mr. Hoodley made a motion to approve bills over a second. Ms. Jones, second in. Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hoodley?
Yes.
Carr?
Upstaying.
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. We have nuisance board minutes in the packet and beautification committee minutes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, on the nuisance board minutes, there's nothing on there about one home that was particularly discussed. Atlink, it's not even mentioned. I don't know if it should be.
Is it on Maple Street? Well, there's one, the 500 of Maple Street. Was that on the list? I had asked if it was. I think you guys thought I meant the one on down by the fairgrounds.
That's 512.
Yeah.
What's wrong?
Well, I can tell you.
500, I think it is.
This was from our second meeting, as I recall. I mean, I typed these. So if there's something left out, I did it. But this was from our second meeting, and I thought that one was fairly brief. So if you want to tell me what's missing, I'll add to it.
The West High Street home down by Family Dollar.
Okay.
Tell her, Jim.
Prior.
Oh. That was one that we were thinking about proposing, but...
And he had indicated that he didn't even send a letter. Then I also, I've never had anything to comment on the beautification committee before. Is this where you do it, or do you go to the beautification committee?
Actually, you can volunteer.
No, no.
I think it would be great. You can volunteer. I think each one of us, our spouse or somebody.
If he's going to say something negative.
Yeah. Well, and a couple of us, she will hire on that committee. So I guess if there's something that you want to comment about it or ask, you can. Maybe we'll know the answer, but...
Like, if you go to item number four, and that's just one of them. I think she is quite self-serving. As many times as her name in that particular business is mentioned. I think she's quite self-serving trying to get the ability to do all of her landscaping for her.
Oh, you know, I got to go back. I went to number four. Oh, down here, all right.
The butterfly garden box? Where you at?
Four on the front page here.
The butterfly garden?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's just, she wants shrubs pulled, and she wants some other improvements landscaping around the place, plus big shrubs removed and...
Well, I was down there the other morning, and really, Hickory Creek will be paying for that. We went down simply to give her ideas of what she might want to use for new landscaping.
By the way, I read it here. She wants it done.
Right, but we're just helping her with ideas for plantings and replacement for the old bushes and stuff. They, once they get torn out, but...
I don't think we should be, you know, if, the way I was interpreting it, I don't think we should be spending beautification money to do a business.
No, we don't really do that. Necessarily, I can't say that we haven't bought some flowers for the corner
Right.
over there across the street and that kind of stuff, but...
This is, it was getting a little extensive in here.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it was very detailed. I will try to add to the nuisance board minutes. So maybe reflect the part that you said I left off. And then I'll send it to you for...
And forward to Mike for follow-up on that.
Yeah. Okay. May I have committee reports?
The Personnel Committee did meet on this past Thursday, on March 31st. The committee agreed to add Cheryl's request to make Dawn Hosteller Senior Utility Clerk. Dawn has suggested she needs, since January, has been taking on all kinds of extra responsibilities with the new hire down there. And wants her more than, more than earning that particular position. The committee also made a decision as a group to hire a full-time person to replace the person that was recently dismissed. Cheryl would have rather had a part-time person. The committee thought with different things going on in the village, and vacations, and time-offs, and things like that, it sure would be nice to have somebody here. We'd rather have one, half a person too many, then we would be short, so we wouldn't have somebody covering all the positions. But that, the committee wanted not to look at the current list of positions and pick one to fit. We wanted to create a new position that could be trained to do all kinds of different things in the village. We thought we were going to be calling it a utility position. We asked Cheryl to create a job description. She has named this position Assistant Clerk. We would like this position to start out at $13 an hour. And lastly, we didn't touch on this in our meeting. However, after the last meeting we had, our committee had the improvements for the personnel manual. And I asked everybody to look them over, and I didn't ask anybody, so I don't know where we are. I thought everything looked fine myself. I looked everything over, and I thought it was exactly...
I'm just waiting for somebody to give me the go-ahead, and I'll bring coordinates back, make changes.
It was exactly what we had asked for. And which, the new committee is at a little bit of a loss because they weren't, outside of myself, the other two weren't in the committee who requested these changes last December.
Like, we had them last week.
Yes, we did. I asked everybody to look at them and check.
Right, right, right. Yeah. I don't have a problem. If you want to get it fast.
Yeah, that would be great. I think we can go ahead.
Do you have a problem?
Nope.
As far as things the committee agreed to, I don't know if we want to have a vote, or if there are any other comments by council. Does anybody have anything to say about Dawn Hosteller being changed to Senior Utility Clerk from Regular Utility Clerk?
Cheryl, you're all great with that, right? I see no problem.
In terms of hiring a full-time person to this newly created title...
I think back to Dawn. I think you do need to vote on that.
Okay. I think we should have a vote.
Since you're basically promoting.
Well, and I brought the ordinance on the other one, so I have to vote.
Yeah, as far as Dawn, I think you need to...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Dawn Hosteller Senior Utility Clerk at the rate of paid quota.
That will start, after I do, okay. Want to make sure?
Roll.
Next paper, okay.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedman?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
And as far as the, you have a...
An ordinance.
Okay, so we'll wait on that until... And that's all.
I mean, they're married to me.
Well, we'll wait till...
Almost there.
Okay. And that's all that my committee has.
Question on, for your committee. I asked Cheryl, I mean, this, and we had a conversation before the meeting started. On this, Cheryl's going to create a job position for this new hire, but...
She did.
Yeah. And then that will be Cheryl's responsibility, I hadn't read that yet, but it's Cheryl's responsibility to hire her.
Correct. In the past, what has happened, at a former councilman's request, was that the Personnel Committee sit in on those interviews. I have never been shy of saying this. I'm not a micromanager, and I don't like doing that. I will do it if Cheryl requests. But I don't think it'll be a mandatory thing, but if Cheryl would like us to sit on there, I know I would, I would be happy to do that.
My feelings exactly.
And what is the position again? You talked about Assistant Clerk on the utility.
It's going to be a person who learns to do as much as possible.
That's just the title?
No, the title's going to be right here. That's what we talked about. We just kind of had a generic title, and Cheryl made a specific title for it.
Basically like a flute person. They're going to learn to...
Everything.
They're going to learn to work with Cheryl. They're going to learn to work with the tax administrator, do the stuff in the utility office and...
Help kit.
Maybe if needed, I guess. You know, need to wish the windows out front, whatever, you know, whatever's needed.
If I could quote Ron Beverly, "Jack of all trades," I think it's what you used the other day.
Right. I think Dawn is deserving of that.
You're doing a great job.
Yep.
Just a verbal water sewer update. We have a meeting, Water Sewer Committee has a meeting Thursday at 4:00 this coming Thursday. We are on our hopefully final draft for the Haber Drive residents, letting them know about the...
Wednesday.
Huh?
Wednesday at 4:00. Huh?
Thursday. Message egg, huh?
I got the eight, the sixth.
Higher Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
He's beating me out again.
I didn't know we changed.
Scott, you want to speak to that? I know that. You want to speak? You want to turn?
I wrote it down right there when we were...
Well, we can.
We talked about it.
So, Mike, you want to continue your report, please?
Okay. Final draft for the Haber Drive, Roberta from RCAP helped us send, going to draft a letter and send up to all the Haber Drive residents, knowing about their project upcoming. Just trying to think. Me and Sheila sat in on the interviews for the new sanitation personnel that's going to work with Ron Daniels. I don't know if Ken wanted to bring that up, or I can bring up our, the recommendation he has coming forth. The other thing was, is the splash pad. I know Amy Galbraith with Rovary has worked a little bit with some, trying to get some grants, maybe taking a look at if we can obtain some money for that project at the park, working with the park board. They have a committee kind of organized, and a couple other people from Rovary and maybe the village here to kind of see what some of the designs are, the cost, operational expenses, that kind of thing, so...
I think sometime it'd be nice if we got the names of exactly who was on the committee.
Right. It was nothing official yet. I know she threw some names out there, through an email.
Yeah.
I know, like Eric and you and me, and maybe, were you on there, Kent? Or... Like I said, Amy threw those out there, so, like I said, it was just some recommendations for that committee.
Okay.
Nothing set in stone, but I know Amy's working with a couple different people, grant-wise, to see if some funds are available for that.
Mike, I don't know if, I just read this in some newspapers, and they're putting one in at Delfus. Is where they're putting one in, and they, I think the Lions Club or somebody raised like, you know, a bunch of money.
They have.
There was an, I don't remember what paper, and it was a good article about the designs and the companies that, you know, design them and build them or whatever, so that might be stuff. It might have been in the press. Yeah, I don't remember. I just remember...
There's all different styles and kinds, but...
Yeah, they're putting in a big one.
Well, you know, it's a big town.
You know, we hopefully, if it comes to fruition, we want people, the kids utilizing in residence and everything, but there's pretty basic systems, and you can buy a garden hose and a sprinkler out there.
Cheryl talked to, went to a class on Friday, and the guy that was one of the speakers said that they have a splash pad that they turn into an ice rink in the wintertime.
We talked about that years ago on the park board, it's nasty down. We had all kinds of information available for them.
We just got evil.
There used to be a nice low area at the park beside the basketball court that always filled up with water and ice over sometimes. Yes, Mr. Hoodley?
Mayor, before Kent goes into new hire, the sewer plant, we had, you know, a PF meeting, as I call it. And the point of interest was a tax levy for the fire department in 2016, meaning on the ballot this year. Committee agrees, you read your minutes, to go forward with that. I think before the chief and the department get real involved in this, we want to have council's full blessing. If they're okay with a 2% or 2 mil levy on the November 16 ballot, what are his council's feelings? You read the minutes, everybody. You saw what they've done. You can see why they need it.
And the committee verbally...
The committee recommends 100% of it.
That's what I'm going to ask of all members of the committee who support it.
What's everybody's feelings?
You guys have done the homework, so I'm going to support what you guys have to say.
And I would say our fire chief did a lot of the legwork on this, and he's spot on with what I read. I think the committee would agree with that.
We're just to a point where we're going to, we're never going to have the money to update anything.
Not with the cost of these...
We're going to kind of die on the vine right here if we don't do something.
So with that, you think we should have a motion, Schuster, to approve that, or is it just a straw vote?
I mean, to put it on the ballot, you probably have to do an ordinance or something. I have to look at it. Remember doing one.
Well, then we'll let you bring, with the fire chief and bring the ordinance back.
What's that?
I don't believe since I've been here, you know...
Oh, I thought, I thought there was something that...
When, then somebody has to draft something, give it to the election board?
Yes.
Which I don't know how any of that works. I'd have to look at it. I don't know if it's in legislation. Well, that's why I brought it up, so we, I know a lot of times, after something gets, we talk about something, and then two months down the road, somebody go, "I didn't see anything about that in the minutes." I think we need to take a vote on this. Of course, you need to decide how many mills. Already did.
Yes, we recommended two.
Well, I guess. I'd vote on it.
Well, then we'll entertain a motion. I would rather not make the motion.
I will make the motion, Michael. I'll second it.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
So the, we will put a 2 mil levy on the ballot, and what is the deadline that all that paperwork has to be filed?
Every day before the election.
Which is, what date are we aiming for?
I think November 1st is... I think November 1st is actually... You guys are going to move into July at least.
I was going to say, end of June, you better have it.
All right.
You'll take care of that, right?
Do you have anything else for your committee, Mr. Hoodley?
Thank you for the floor.
Yep. Do we, and you were completely done with your water sewer and refuse report. Any other committee reports?
I wanted to set one up with Nick and Ron for the bicycle.
Yes. I didn't forget.
Okay.
The downtown?
Yes.
Area, bicycle riding? Okay. You guys can get together and...
Within a week, I'll call.
So that's falling into the sidewalk committee?
Yeah.
Ordinance, ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah. When you decide, just put it on the bulletin board or let us know.
And is the public welcome to that?
Any...
Any committee minutes?
When they post them, you know, that tells them. Do you put it in the paper?
No, not the committee. That's a purpose of that calendar out there, let the public know that we're going to meet on a Friday or...
Just do it out there.
Yeah, you might not have been here. When I'm under, I suggested getting rid of some of the signs, and the ordinance up there, writing them down.
So should I, the administrator be involved, or do you give the signs?
You guys read the ordinances, so I don't care what you do. I'm going to touch base with you. I don't enforce, oh, I do, I order the signs. I don't enforce it. I don't tackle people or anything else. Well, we're going to change your job.
That'll be your new assistant's job, right?
Okay. No other committee reports? All right.
I don't know if this is a committee or what it is, but I had someone ask me today about, and Kent, you probably already have the answers to this, about putting a dumpster somewhere instead of throwing all this stuff to the street. Which way is the cheaper? He asked me.
A dumpster won't work.
They won't do it well, they?
Well, they will. He's had it before. We've had them at properties, but...
Okay, and that might suggest if maybe we have one at the recycling center, and the first of every month, they can use it? But he thought it would be cheaper, you know, you wouldn't have so much manpower in it.
I've had tons of calls, tons of complaints. Why won't we take tires? Why won't, you know?
Well, I really think that needs to go to the water sewer refuge. I mean, I'm not sure that this is the venue for that. Those things, if there's changes that need to happen, that needs to be taken to the committee. Committee can discuss it and make a decision to come back here with it.
Yeah, but councils talk about this every time we go.
Yeah, we've addressed this every year that it comes up from general pickup.
I mean, there's water sewers.
Inconsistent.
And we've probably been consistent for years, and if there needs to be changes, I think it needs to go through committee.
Sheila, we'll have that go to the committee, and they can discuss it again. I will say that I have been working a little bit on curbside recycling or recycling somewhere. The residents want it, and I don't know if, you know, we'll be able to do it or not, but it's worth checking.
Is we trying to have it ordered the committee too, then?
Well, we need to gather some information to give to the committee to review.
Well, here. Didn't we have a recycling unit at the yard?
Yeah. I guess my only comment on that is if you go out and look at 90% of these piles, they've got things out that I expressly say we're not going to pick up. All that metal stuff could go to that dumpster anytime. So when you say people want it, I think it's a limited number, in my opinion. Most people just toss everything out, without even reading what the ad says. I don't think they're going to haul it. Now, if you want to try the curbsides and, you give that a try.
And they...
I don't think the town will cooperate.
The county says Hickory Creek is the biggest recyclers in the county. The residents, some of them, want recycling. So I think we owe it to them to check into it.
But we also pick up the township too. It's not just the residents come to the tree. There again, I'm open to it. We've tried some in the past, and it just doesn't seem to...
Don't county bring their recycling thing over here across the street?
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
The first Friday and the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, but you get a lot of out-of-town limits, people using that. So you got to keep that in mind, too. When we had the cardboard dumpster, until it got abused, it wasn't getting used by 99% of town.
That's what I'm...
I deal with these people every week. There's a vast majority that is too lazy to do anything with their trash, except that us pick it up. I'm sorry. Well, that's the, I mean, I can... No, I, my personal example, I wasn't a very good recycler until I lived in Defiance, where I had curbside pickup, and I said, "Yeah, I do recycling." They brought my little bin and set it out there, and we started, you know, what we could, glass. And there's probably more weeks I got more recycling than I do trash.
Well, we went through this before, and if I'm not mistaken...
But that's only because it's convenient.
It's going to cost the citizens more money.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we had...
There was a company out of, like Antwerp, I think Wolters, or an estimate.
It was going to cost more money to our people who supplied our water and sewers. And at the time, we felt our rates were stiff enough for, at the time being. So, I mean, we can go through it again, but...
If I recall correctly, we actually got to a point of having a recycling dumpster at the site down there on Elm. And they were going to come and pick it up and haul it away, okay? It was manpower to watch it and maintain it, and make sure they were dumping glass and paper and different things in the right bins. And then there was a charge.
We're getting mixed in the bins.
And then there was a charge for them to haul it, take it back, and then bring it, empty it. It was like in between, they were going to empty it in between the days we were open. And that was a start.
If this guy across the, he comes from Antwerp, doesn't he? Is that the county?
That's because of the county. I don't think he comes to town at all.
Antwerp doesn't come anymore? But if the county is saying that we are number one in recycling, maybe the county needs to come more often. And the school doesn't collect newspapers that go there?
Or, they used to cardboard in newspapers, that's what.
Okay, well, we'll, I'll keep working on that. And any other committee reports? Maybe have administrators report, please?
Yeah. Before we get to the new hire, there's one thing. People, whatever, the flags aren't, the storm did a job on the pole during the weekend. The cleat actually broke away, so the guy made a repair to it today. We'll get him up into this week. Then back to the water sewer committee. Mike, it's when we had the interviews. It's been about four hours interviewing four people. I guess based on Ron, the committee, myself. Want to put forth the name of Jeff Rumple to fill the spot at the sewer plant. I mean, we're all familiar with Jeff in the past. But we think with his experience, he has talked to the EPA. If he is hired, he can take his test almost immediately for his Class II, which is what he held prior, or during his earlier tenure. And if, and here it's all pending physical drug tests. His rate of pay would start out 1652 an hour. And once you get the Class II license, that would bug dub. But that's subject to, I guess that's what we're recommending to the mayor, and then she can recommend it to council.
Is that a new wage?
No, he'd start out at the grade one labor.
Okay, so we don't have to change pay ordinance or anything?
And where does it go? Where does it go after that?
We talked about that as a, well, yeah, as the committee. There's...
We talked about that as a, well, yeah, as the committee, there's, they're also looking at restructuring the sewer wages in general, but we thought if he came back to the class two, since we don't really have a position for that, he probably just fit into the form and pay until the new system gets moved out. So, I mean, some of this stuff's gonna change down the road.
Which is he coming back at? Grade one or four?
He'd come back as a grade one until he actually gets that test and certificate and all of that.
And the committee is all in agreement with us? The committee's talked about it?
Yeah.
Not all in agreement.
No, I was just gonna say, we talked, Ron wasn't able to sit through the interviews. With Ron and, you know, Ken, you know, narrowing down the four candidates and, like us sitting through them and talking to Ron afterward, we're.
We had some good ones.
Yeah, we did. This is who you're recommending between the two?
Well, based on what.
Okay, so you're, you're okay with that, Ron?
Yeah.
Administrator's okay with it?
I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Anybody else that was interviewed, did they have their license already?
Yes.
There's a fellow from Paine that has his class one.
She willing to move here?
Antwerp.
Yeah, he's up, basically to the Antwerp area, well, yeah, he lives.
He wanted to come to Antwerp, he'd come to Antwerp.
Wouldn't come all the way here?
He didn't say, no, he wouldn't come all the way here, but he said he probably could move into Antwerp.
Still pretty far away to, for.
Yeah, but don't you have Jesse doing the same thing, isn't Jesse going to?
She's still up in the air, but, yeah, if she would end up on the.
Sure would, yeah, she'd be ten, fifteen minutes.
It'd be the same.
Kind of the, well, then we go by, there's nothing but grit and stone, but I don't like them too much beyond that.
They were young and they were very honest, they answered, or honesty, you could tell, because it's not what we wanted to hear. And that, I like that. So do I make the recommendation that we hire, I will make the recommendation that we hire Jeff Rumpel as a grade one employee for the wastewater treatment plant? And then good dark screen, physical and background check?
I would make the motion from the mayor's recommendation that we hire Jeff Rumpel.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Krasinski?
Yep.
Thank you. Kent, got more?
Just very briefly, the water tower situation did actually get some good news, I'm not gonna stay here all night explaining it, but we do have a, we do have more time to look towards Plan B as far as antennas in general. We're still gonna proceed with ranking the engineering firms this Thursday, get somebody already on board and at least for phase one, start scoping out where we can put it, maybe start some design work, and then phase two will be the actual construction, but it's not gonna get done quite as soon as we were thinking, so we got a little bit of breathing space.
Is there, and I, I'm not on that community, so I don't know where they are, but is there a spot located for that water tower?
Just what we're, where we think it might, but till we get an engineer on board and they start showing all their testing.
We're not gonna know that.
We have, what, seven engineers at that? Six.
Six.
No, six different firms apply.
Correct.
Anything else, Kent?
No.
All right, thank you. Oh, you're up.
Okay, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero four, the first reading by caption only, an ordinance creating a new assistant clerk position for Bill to Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, that's the position that we talked about earlier in the meeting. The job description I think Cheryl had done, and I think I had put it in the stack of things that were passed around, so I don't know if anybody got to look at it or not, but.
Move with suspended rules.
Second.
Beverly made a motion, and by second, suspended rules, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero four by caption only, an ordinance creating a new assistant clerk position for Bill to Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, so move.
Second.
Jones made a motion, Mr. Hill, and the chairman seconded, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
What's going on with our private industrial park, I keep getting calls about that?
We're supposed to be closing it today, I, I wasn't at my office very much, but the D and the gals in my office were calling and getting Jerry Hayes and everything, so I don't, I'd have to check when I get back to my office tomorrow, but I'll let you know first thing in the morning.
All right. Anything else, then? All right. Police chief, Ballinger?
Mayor and council, I put a paper on front of everybody, six-month probationary period for Officer Nate Allen was completed on March twenty-sixteenth, and he's done a good job, he's, he's young, he's still learning, and we need to get him to a class for report writing, but he's not afraid to ask questions, and he's to work every day, he's not late getting in there, does a good job when he's there. I just would recommend that the, the mayor and council appoint him to the permanent position of police officer two at the applicable rate of pay.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Ballinger regarding that? If not, I'll make the recommendation that we make Officer Nathan Allen a police officer two.
I would make the motion on the mayor's recommendation that we put on full-time position, off-probation, I guess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yeah.
Krasinski?
Yes. How many officers, do you have now?
Eight.
Any part-time?
Yeah, we have three part-time. Current time, yeah. We just lost one, person this year, he's the one at Cotton Rock, he hired him full-time, but he didn't make it through his probation because he got hurt, not on the job, but back problems. I kept him on the roster just to keep his schooling up, and then, once he's on disability, we're not gonna do that. So, we do have an application for a part-time, another part-time officer, we're still checking him out, but I'll get back with you on that. Look, he's a veteran officer, he just retired from another department, but.
You know, female officer?
Yes, Monica Herman, yes, yep. Yep, she's part-time, she does good, we've been calling her out a lot with our, some of our sex crimes, she does a good job.
She's still working part-time or full-time, how's that?
She was part-time in Eden, correct?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything for Chief Ballinger? Thank you so much.
Thanks, chief. Councilman, mayor.
You put the good work, chief. Be safe out there.
May we hear from Fire Chief Kramer?
Yes, I'd like a recommendation from the mayor for Blake Whitman to be put on the fire department.
Has he had his training?
Not yet.
All right. Well, I would make the recommendation that we put Blake Whitman on the fire department pending good screen, physical and background check.
I move, we accept the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Guy's dad retired from the department with twenty years of service.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Chief Kramer?
I do. I know we ask you this each and every time.
Twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Well.
He's prepared.
I don't know, that's not, is E M T, how they holding up with their staff?
We're working on it. EMS report, there's two, possibly three that are in class right now.
Okay.
One is from here on the department already, and the two will be able to fill in once we, we can let them.
And we're putting some extra hours in and everything, and cover their shifts, so.
And also EMS is happening, Pancake and sausage breakfast, April seventeenth, Sunday morning, from seven to noon.
Great. Make sure we get something so we can get it on our website and our.
Yeah, Don has that, right?
TV station. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And Monty's not here, so thank her for the report for us.
Yep.
Cheryl, would you like to give us your report?
I have a list, a letter to me, they're telling about some expansion they're gonna be doing, I think over the next three years, it sounds like. The month that eight hundred eight hash statement, and the one that I'm proud of, the intercheck statement, that Jim is viewing, so, yeah.
That's good.
Numbers. He will come there.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl? Thank you, Cheryl. I put on their table tonight a letter that I got from, I assume, a resident in Hicksville. They prefer not to sign their name, but personally, I don't mind getting those unsigned, if it, you know, points out something worthwhile to us, so. And then I guess just to make a comment that, I've noticed several people remodeling their houses around town, and I just want them to know it hasn't gone unnoticed, and they look very nice, the improvements people are making to their homes. Last Friday, I went on a tour at APT, and it was a great tour, Bob Latta stopped by the office here to see me, and Ron Beverly came and joined in, and then we went out to APT and took the tour, and it was a nice long tour, and it was just very impressive of what they're doing out there with high school students, training them, and.
Did Mr. Latta go on the tour?
Yes, he did, and all three county commissioners.
Good.
So it was very good, and we got to see the students in the classroom, it's very nice. And I know that our committee to work on the industrial park sign has met, you saw those minutes a few weeks ago, Tony Nice Wander was on that committee, and he was gathering information for the signage cost and that kind of stuff, and he told me, like, this week, he, he should have some things around for the committee to get back together, so I know Ken's on that committee, and so, it's not been dropped. And then Val and Gary aren't here, but I did a walk-through with them Friday at the park, looked at all the camera system and stuff that they're, how it operates over there, and how they check it, and things that we need to work on at the park as far as some playground equipment repairs that Nick Nicholson suggested, and how we could go about getting some of those things done at the park, and the park looks real good. I think that we will be having some of our volunteers down there working this spring, doing some jobs, and I think Kent, you said that some of those landscaping buds were gonna need to be torn out before that, roadways put in, so.
Yeah, they can get rid of whatever they want.
All right. And then last week, I went to mayor's and managers, annual mayor's and managers dinner at Penderville, Ohio, and Bob Latta was the speaker there along with the state auditor. And, so that's kind of what I've been doing last week, so. Does anyone else, anyone sitting in the audience that hasn't spoken have anything to say, or anybody else at the council table? Yes, Mick?
Industrial drive light.
Still waiting?
She, she hasn't got back with you since that day we met with her?
Yeah, we need to give her a bump.
She's, she's thinking that day that Kent and I met with her, she seemed like, you know, this easy peasy, we knocked this baby right out, and I just kinda.
Yeah, we are. It was somebody new that took over, the person pretty well dialed it in, sounds a little like EPA.
Yes, some will start being up till ten at night, so.
Yeah. For a couple of months.
While it does know their business.
Can I, I'll say something real quick about this letter, and then we talk about a lot of residents, and over the seven years I've sat on council, we've had people talk to us, we all have, you know, and concerns about the flooding and sanitary and different aspects of the community, but, you know, sometimes they're not easy fixes, we work with different entities and agencies, and, you know, we've got loaded on a council here, so, just letting you know, as me and being, you know, the chair of that committee, my door is always open, my phone is always open, if somebody wants to come and address that, I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to them, I'm sure Kate gets a lot of phone calls, we all have over the years, so, I'm sure the committee would be interested in hearing concerns and, and.
Yes, I wish I knew who the letter was from so that we could talk to this individual and maybe give them some information that they're not aware of.
Not close council or hold onto council.
My phone's on it, not to interrupt, they can't stop the letter, then I, I don't really look at it. Well, it's, I mean, just in the general concern, however, there are things that we don't hear that.
Yeah.
And a lot of times are pretty important.
We cannot discuss everything at a council meeting, you know, publicly, but there are a lot, there's a lot of information we're willing to tell people if they just give us a call, so. Yes, Ron?
Thank you, mayor. I think that possibly the general public is not totally aware of what we're doing. I think the general public kind of has the idea that we're out fixing flood, flooding problems, we're not. We are fixing our C S Os, our combined sewer overflows.
EPA.
As per the EPA, and if we don't fix them, we will be in large, large dollar problems with the EPA. We were trying to incorporate, Mike's committee was trying to incorporate some corrective on the flooding, as he was taking care of the C S Os, but the people that are sitting back thinking that the only thing that Mike's committee is doing is fixing flooding problems, they please need to understand we are fixing combined sewer overflows.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right.
For those that don't know. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion, mayor.
Is that a second, or do you have more to say?
I second.
Ron Beverly second. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill Martin.